I'm going to go ahead and call this council meeting to order. Could I get Jack Wagner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And everybody, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could I ask for a roll call?
Councilmember Agamonte?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards is absent. Councilmember Gallion?
Present.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here.
Excuse me, Mayor Cook?
Yes.
I would like to ask the council if they would add an item to tonight's agenda. This came forward after the posting of the agenda. It is a proclamation I would like to add as Item 3D. It's a proclamation of the 180th anniversary of the founding of the Sonoma Pueblo. And if you could take a vote of the council to add this item, please.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk, could we do a roll call vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. At this time, comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time of the item comes up for council consideration. Is there any public comment? Please step to the podium and state your name and address.
Congratulations on your great calling with the seashell at the Hula on the Plaza.
Thank you.
I loved it. And the concert was beautiful. I'm a newcomer to Sonoma. I arrived here last Thursday.
That is new.
Quite new, yes, that's new. Well, what I wanted to appear before the council regarding, and it looks like there's three council members missing tonight.
We have a total of five, there's one absent.
One. And please, somebody give, oh, here's my timer, good. I'm a retired nurse, RN, BSN, PHN. I'll be 76 in a few days. And I lost my housing last month. And my entire May and June, Social Security was eaten up by my motel bill, putting my items into storage, transportation and food. And Wednesday, I had to surrender my very beloved kitty cat to a friend who rescues cats. And I was admitted to the Haven. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Haven. It is a Haven. It is a Godsend and a lifesaver. I have worked, well, actually, I started working when I was five years old for pay at eight or nine, and been on my own since I was 15. I rented one place in Marin County for over 31 years straight with several different owners. More recently, I had a cottage for seven years, which I loved because of the privacy. Oh my goodness, 58 seconds. At any rate, I'm now homeless. I have absolutely no history of substance abuse. I'm trying to volunteer with hospice by the bay or find a live-in caregiver position with a sweet little old lady who can't afford the agencies. I just want you to, all of you in this room, to tour the Haven and know that, how important it is to human beings. And my dream is that you will have three in Sonoma, one for women, one for men, and one for families. And I just hope you'll give it your full support to the Haven. And know that not all the homeless are seriously mentally ill, alcoholics, drug addicts. And also, I would hope that at some point, you will consider some form of rent control. I moved to this area hoping the rents would be lower. But it's a bad situation everywhere, everywhere. It's very, very bad. I hate to leave California at this point in my life. But meanwhile, I'm safe at the Haven. God bless you, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Shawna?
I'm Shawna Davis. And Mayor David Cook, I brought Adam Kaiser's family with me today. If you could stand up. It's Kim Kaiser and Bill Kaiser, and they lost their son from bullying, and he committed suicide. And I just really want to thank David Cook for reaching out and helping me get the proclamation for next month. And I want to thank you for dedicating the meeting in honor of Adam. So I just wanted to see their parents. And Ben Sessions and I came to bring them to the meeting to you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And we do meeting dedications after comments from the public. Is there any other comments from the public? Mr. Wagner?
Jack Wagner, Fano Lane. We try to cram a lot of stuff in here really quick. I went to Punk Rock Bowling Music Festival, Bowling Tournament in Las Vegas last month. I just want to recognize a few Sonoma High alumni that played out there. Matt Wilson's band, The Albright's, and Scotty Powell and TJ Mayhew's band, Get Dead, all performed. There's actually been a longstanding Sonoma punk rock scene. For someone growing up here, it was one of the few things to do other than going out to Skaggs or the Plateau for a kegger. Which pleases me that Rob Wilson told me he was talking to Supervisor Goran recently about bringing up the Pump Track idea, which is a dirt bike track out in Maxwell Farms. And that's another great idea that's been up in the ideas for, you know, putting a dog park back there. There's a group that wants a disc golf course back there. And these are all great ideas, I think, or something not to do with drinking in town for people to do. I think it'd be a great mission statement for a Sonoma Valley Parks and Rec Department to oversee kind of that facility, of that as being a family rec center. I do want to thank you guys for meeting with me over the last month. We were in public transit. Despite Measure A failing, which, you know, kind of just basically tells us people don't want to be taxed more in the county. I do feel confident that we have transit as a priority now and that we have that idea. I'm just going to be incorporating that to my argument to the county for a public bank. Hopefully, by next primary election, have something on the ballot. Bill Clinton even brought up Infrastructure Bank. He's just talking about bringing corporate income back from overseas and taxing that to have an infrastructure bank. So tying public banking into infrastructure from the revenues just makes sense. And I also argue that for something to create funding for projects like SDC and other public works. Also, Richard Bracco passed away last week. He was a regular at the Swiss. So add that on, but it's tragic when people pass and just want to. But yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Mayor Cook and council members and city staff. My name is Lynn Marie Davinson, 65, Guadalajara. A member of the Manufactured Homeowners Alliance, the group representing homeowners in the city of Sonoma. First off, I want to thank A. Johan for another scheduling miracle, coordinating the August 12 date for the second study session for our Rent Stabilization Ordinance Revision Project. The first study session was devoted to the legal exchanges between the attorneys and showed the complexity of the case law involved and how two of the sides have built up piles of briefs on the issues. We're hoping that the next study session will bring us back into focus on our original goal, which is to provide a triple win. A triple win that includes landowner rights, homeowner's rights, and the city's right to regulate. The original 1992 ordinance, only 16 pages long, unanimously approved by the council led by then-Mayor Larry Murphy and councilmembers Bob Cannard, Anthony Sirmack, Ken Brown, and Phyllis Carter stated, quote, "Pursuant to studies and hearings conducted by the city council and staff, the city council of Sonoma has determined it necessary and in the public interest to establish a mechanism to assist in the resolution of disputes that may arise from time to time between tenants and management of mobile home parks regarding the rates charged for the rental or lease of space." End quote. The mechanism, of course, is the ordinance, which provides the landowners with a guaranteed annual increase in profit, provides the homeowners with a guaranteed protection of their home investment, and provides the city with a formula to regulate future requests for additional rent increases. One other short section from the original ordinance. "The city council of the city of Sonoma has recognized and finds that the state of California has recognized by the adoption of special legislation regulating tenancies of mobile homeowners and mobile home parks that there is a significant distinction between tenants of mobile home parks and other dwelling units. And the council likewise has recognized that tenants of mobile home parks, unlike apartments or residents of other rental stock, are in the unique position of having made a substantial investment in a resident, the space for which is rented or leased." So simply stated, a triple win, landowners' rights, homeowner's rights, and the city's right to regulate. Thank you again.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Hermes. I live at 12 Ramon Street in Rancho de Sonoma. And I'm on the Tri-Park Committee. And you have to give us points for persistence. I'd like to address the vacancy decontrol aspect of our ordinance, which was instituted as a revision by the park owners in 1998. A lot of you, we distributed packets before the last study session. In that packet, there was a chart that showed that most of the ordinances in Northern California allow no increase upon resale. Ours allows an increase of 10% each time a home changes hands. And I know you're really interested in protecting the affordable housing that you have now in Sonoma. So I'd like to share with you my own personal experience of how that 10% increase upon resale has impacted, an experience that I had of how that impacts and compounds over time. In 19, sorry, in 2003, I purchased a home in Moon Valley at 176 Pas Pajeros. When I purchased the home, the previous owner was paying $687 in space rent. Because I was a new owner, that went up 10%. So the rent was now $756. Each year, we allow a cost of living increase in that rent. So by the time, after a couple of years, the rent was now at $777. And it was way beyond what I could comfortably afford. So I sold it. This home has apparently changed hands a couple more times since then. And because of those 10% increases upon resale added to the annual cost of living increases that we get, the rent on that space is now at $978. So because we have that in our ordinance, that we can, that the park owners can increase upon resale by 10%, that site now is going for 300, over $300 more per month than it was just when I bought it. That's an increase of 42%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Peterson from the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau. We have NASCAR coming up this weekend. And the Visitors Bureau is pleased to announce that we have our great partnership with the county, with the raceway, with Sonoma County Transit and the city of Sonoma to have a free shuttle. So we're welcoming race fans, both race fans here in Sonoma, to be able to take a free shuttle on Thursday and Friday of race weekend from the horseshoe city hall down to the racetrack. And folks at the racetrack that are camping out in what's called 50 acres, they can take the shuttle back up to Sonoma. We've added a shop, a stop at Cornerstone. So again, folks that are down at the racetrack can come and spend time in Sonoma. And we've extended the hours this year till 10 o'clock at night so they can stay and have dinner and really enjoy themselves. So I've given you each a shuttle schedule. And we hope that you'll consider using it if you're going out to the race. And that, again, we're really pleased to have this partnership. So thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Hello, council. Deirdre Sheeran with Sweetwater Spectrum. And I'm here to say happy summer to you and to our community. And I am thrilled to be able to introduce to you a new member of the Sweetwater Spectrum community. And this is Luke Carnell. And he is our new farmer. And we are here to talk about the Saturday farm stand that we have at 7:30, Spain Street, 7:30. 7:30, Spain Street, from 9 to 1. And come and get our beautiful vegetables. We're about to get an onslaught of tomatoes. So it's salsa season. Come and visit us. We've got some microgreens that we're going to try to start selling at the stand. But I'd really appreciate it if you would come by and see us and introduce yourself to the newest member of our Sweetwater community. Want to say hello?
Yeah, I'm excited to be here in Sonoma and looking forward to getting to know you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
I did forget one thing, sorry. I also wanted to introduce Jan Erickson, who is the newest member of our board of directors. So while she's a long-term community member, she's also new to the Sweetwater community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close and go into meeting dedications. Is there any meeting dedications? Councilmember Hundley?
As some of you might know, I was born in Charleston, South Carolina. My dad was born there. My grandfather was born there. And I still have many friends and family who live there. Last Wednesday, it's harder than I thought it would be. Nine innocent people were shot and killed at a church in an almost unspeakable act of racial hatred. I say almost unspeakable because although it is devastating and infuriating and hard to understand, it's not an isolated incident of race-based crime and conflict in recent years. And it's our responsibility to cultivate acceptance and understanding between the different cultures in our community and our country. My hometown has come together in an astonishing way. Yesterday, as many as 20,000 people met on a large bridge that spans between Mount Pleasant, where I went to high school, and the historic downtown to create a chain of unity. Even over here on the West Coast, we should use this tragedy as a reminder and inspiration to embrace the diverse members of our community, whether that diversity comes from race, socioeconomic status, age, gender, religious, religion or sexual orientation. So I would like to dedicate this meeting to my hometown, Charleston.
Thank you, Councilmember Hundley. Is there any other? Councilmember Agamonte?
I have, I would like to dedicate this evening, of course. And thank you, what happened to Jack? Gone. To the Bracco family, of course. Unfortunately, they've lost a family member, Richard Bracco. And I know that they are a highly respected family here, who's been here for many years. So I would just like to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Is there any other medic? I would like to also dedicate this council meeting to Adam Kaiser. And I thank his family for being here. It's sad to see a young soul pass on, especially, you know, here in Sonoma, Sonoma Valley, which we look at Sonoma Valley as being part of us. So I would like to dedicate this meeting also to Adam Kaiser. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and go off the dais. And I have some presentations. So if I could start off with Maribel Campos Day.
Congratulations, by the way. Maribel Campos Day. Whereas since 1947, Youth of the Year has been Boys and Girls Club of America's premier recommendation program, celebrating the extraordinary achievements of club teens. Club members who earn the Youth of the Year title embody the values of leadership, service, academic excellence, and healthy lifestyles. They exemplify the critical impact the Boys and Girl Club have on the lives of young people. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Sonoma Valley, founded in 1962, serves more than 2,300 children and teens annually across six Sonoma Valley locations, living up to their mission to provide youth and positive opportunities to learn and succeed. And whereas, when Maribel Campos, a Sonoma Valley high school student, needed academic help and emotional support, the Boys and Girls Club of Sonoma Valley was there for her. And taking advantage of leadership, opportunities like Keystone at the club, and volunteering with younger club members, Maribel blossomed, both personally and academically. Whereas Maribel has maintained a 3.8 GPA, congratulations on that, and will be the first in her family to graduate from high school and go on to college. And whereas, Maribel was named the 2015 Boys and Girls Club of Sonoma Valley Youth of the Year, and went on to be named one of three Northern Californias Youth of the Year recipients. Whereas, Maribel was selected from among nine outstanding teen Youth of the Year candidates to be named the California Youth of the Year. A prestigious honor presented in recognition of her leadership, service, economic excellence, and dedication to live a healthy lifestyle. So congratulations. And is there a few words you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members, for this honor. I am so honored that you've given me this recognition and for all that the Boys and Girls Club has helped me achieve. So thank you.
Can we get a picture, a quick picture of you two together?
Thank you. You're better at this one.
It's got to be pushy, girl.
I'm more pushy, right? Like, I'm not enough.
Hold the proclamation up too, maybe.
Open it.
There we go. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you for your service in the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District Board from 1985 to 2015. That's a long service. And we will be having a presentation by that later on or right after this, next, to say what it is. And I just want to say thank you for, that's a long time. How many years? 30 years. Well, congratulations. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Just, it's a wonderful organization to work with. And it's great staff. And good luck to the next person. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thank you for the invitation, council members also. And I'm Phil Smith. I'm the general manager of the district. And I believe that we have a few PowerPoint slides to show you tonight. And, yeah, thank you. And I'm going to keep this to 10 minutes, but feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. The district is a comprehensive vector control district. Doesn't just deal with mosquitoes, also deals with other vector-borne diseases, rodents and ticks and so on. From its humble beginnings 100 years ago in the county of Marin, the district has progressively expanded its territory over the years. And we now stretch all the way from the Golden Gate Bridge in Sausalito up to the Sea Ranch in the north, and also to the east, as you can see. These are some of the services that we provide. We do a lot of education in the schools and the science curriculum. And that's very well received. And we find that if we educate the kids, they also educate their parents about protecting themselves against mosquito bites and breeding in the backyards and ticks when they go on hikes. And we do a lot of things that I'll tell you about in the next few slides. We operate under what's called an Integrated Vector Management Program. Those of you who are familiar with integrated pest management probably recognize the principles. Some people think that we just sort of go out and spray, and there's a lot more to it than that. Our first-line strategies are really outreach, prevention, and physical control and biological control of mosquito habitat. And in a few minutes, I'll show you some slides pertaining to the local area, too. We have lots of organic agriculture around. And we maintain an excellent relationship with the beekeepers and with the organic growers. And many of the products that we use, and we do need to use the product, are certified by EPA as organic or ARMRI, Organic Materials Review Institute. And for the last few years, we've been busily working away preparing an environmental impact report. And I think it's about that thick now. So it's almost about ready to give to the board. That will be available for public review soon. Our biggest program by far is the mosquito control program. Up in the top left, you see what we call a green pool. That's an unmaintained swimming pool. Those were very pervasive during the recession. The number now is fewer, but they can breed tens or hundreds of thousands of mosquitoes if left alone. We have a fully-equipped laboratory with trained biologists who use molecular biology and PCR methods to identify the diseases that we hope not to find in the mosquitoes. One of them being, of course, West Nile virus, which is probably one of the most famous mosquito-borne afflictions. And it's underreported and can be quite severe. And the, what we call the neuroinvasive form of the disease seems to actually be on the increase. The number of cases in California was almost 800 last year. It doubled over the previous year. And we look for it in dead birds. We run the dead bird program. We have sentinel chickens who are roaming around in some enclosures. And we actually test mosquito pools, too, when we put the traps out. We're really proud to say that, I think, at least in part, as a consequence of the staff's very hard work, there have been no human cases in Sonoma or Marin County of West Nile virus for a number of years. Just based on the statewide statistics, you might expect about 14 or 15 cases a year in Sonoma County. These are some of the bad actors that you see here in the mosquito realm. We are kind of concerned at the moment that there are some invasive mosquito species that have made it to the Bay Area. There's one called the yellow fever mosquito. And that's made it to the peninsula and has also been found in the Hayward area recently. So it's only a car ride away. We are doing surveillance to make sure that it hasn't got to the local area. But that transmits dengue fever, yellow fever, Japanese encephalitis, and other diseases. And fortunately, those diseases are not present within the local community. But each year, about 20 to 30 people in Marin and Sonoma County do have those diseases, largely because they travel from areas where that's endemic. We get lots of requests due to the Love Lake Oak Woodland area around here each year to help people deal with the tree hole mosquito. As its name suggests, it lives and breeds in the water that's retained in tree holes. And that mosquito is an aggressive biter and also transmits dog heartworm. So these are a few of the, this is kind of a zoomed-out view of some of the sources in the local area. If we zoom in, we see that there are 1,382 known sources of mosquitoes that we may If we zoom in, we see that there are 1,382 known sources of mosquitoes that we maintain in our geospatial database, and we check these as often as we can on a regular basis. Not all of them are shown here. In the town and the immediate surrounding area last year, we find activities increasing. To date, we've handled 134 service requests for mosquitoes, and as you see, we've had a number of calls already for yellow jackets. They've started early this year. And we have a full-time rodent specialist who deals with rat problems and issues. And so we're actually on track to exceed the numbers from 2014. In some of the surrounding areas here, we see the San Pablo National Wildlife Refuge, and that gives rise to a number of mosquitoes that are fairly aggressive biters with up to a 20-mile flight range. And we're working with the refuge staff to reduce the habitat as much as we can without adversely impacting endangered species or wildland and wetland concerns. This is the Ramal Road, I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce it, and the Water Agency wastewater treatment wetlands, and that gives rise to a lot of mosquito production each year. We have found West Nile virus in previous years in the birds and the mosquitoes. So once it's in the mosquito, it's ready to bite a person, so that really kind of ups our level of alert and activity. And here are the Sonoma Marsh Unit of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. These wetlands also potentially put off a lot of mosquitoes and require a considerable amount of effort and expenditure by the district. And these can affect the ranches and livestock as well as flying into the populated areas. We have a pretty busy rodent program. It's been many years since hantavirus was in the area, but that was one of the more severe diseases, and we are equipped for that. As you might recall, it was in Yosemite a couple of years ago and caused some deaths and other problems there. One of the concerns that we deal with is collecting ticks, testing them for diseases. The famous disease, of course, that they carry is Lyme disease. It's being found that they carry other species of the Borrelia bacteria, some of which also cause disease. There are also emerging tick diseases. One of our local tick activists called them nature's dirty needle, which is kind of a rather apt moniker for them. In our public health activities, we're a fairly small staff, there's about 40 of us, but we're out and we're very active in the community every day, whether in classroom preparations. We have a variety of somewhat exotic equipment. We charter a helicopter periodically. We have an airboat of the kind that you might use on Florida swampland, and that comes in very handy in the Laguna de Santa Rosa and other similar areas. We even have a thing called a piston bully, which if you've ever skied, you see them going up the ski slopes. We use it for working on ditches and trenches and improving drainage and tidal circulation. I thought I should mention the recent Prop 218 ballot. The district made a bid for improved financing, having held its assessments level for many years during the recession to try to help people who are struggling financially. The district realized that it was facing increasing costs each year beyond the Consumer Price Index, and to put it briefly, we put out a ballot. Unfortunately, we met the same fate as Measure A, although our measure failed by just about 1%, 1 and 1/4%. In response, the district's beginning to retrench, and we've reduced one position already, and we are beginning to study the services, and the board will have to examine its priorities and the available funding and see what we can do in coming years. So just last month, actually, we passed a greatly reduced budget, so we have shrunk our budget somewhat. The district's also been taking some pretty assertive steps to be a good financial steward of the funds that the public supplies to it. We have reduced our unfunded pension liabilities, and they're close to the optimum level of 70%. Staff have made contract concessions on pay and benefits, as has the management. And new hires pay into their pensions more, and they receive a lower benefit, and they don't receive paid medical benefit in retirement. The district's governed by a 24-member board of trustees, and we're hoping that you will be kind enough to send us a member soon to carry on the honorable work Mr. Bowie was so good at. And as you might know, they are appointed by the cities and the counties to either a two-year or a four-year term of office. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll be glad to expand on any points that I wasn't clear about.
Vice Mayor Gallion.
I just have a question. People think mosquito, wet, times of the year. What have you noticed with the fact that we are in a pretty severe drought? Has that increased or decreased your abilities?
That's my 10 minutes. Curiously, it has increased. It's a little counterintuitive. The scientists are scratching their heads trying to figure out why. Humans have been around, what, a couple hundred thousand years? It seems the mosquito's been around about 268 million years and has figured out a few things. So it's constantly surprising us. It's a wilder little critter, but the number of mosquitoes, the abundance, has gone up. And we think also that the reduced availability of water may be forcing the birds and the mosquitoes and other intermediate hosts and parasites of the disease transmission cycle into closer proximity. So our workload is actually going up, which surprised us.
Thank you.
Is Councilmember Hunley?
What's the prevalence of Lyme like in Sonoma County and Sonoma Valley?
Yes, thanks. It varies quite a bit, actually. We do publish it on our website, and the state also does, but at the low end, it would be about 1.2%, and that would be in the adult ticks. The highest that I'm aware of is actually at the China Camp Park in Marin County that has about a 10% prevalence rate. We're paying more attention these days to the very tiny nymphal ticks, which are only about as big as a poppy seed, but we're finding that they have a considerably higher infection rate. And they hide in the leaf litter and on decaying logs, and people are at risk if they sit or kind of roll in the leaf litter.
Is there a way to control that? I mean, how do you stop the spread of ticks that have Lyme?
Yes, it's largely through education and advising people to wear repellent, to wear light-colored pants, to take a shower after they've been in the habitat, to maybe avoid some of the tall grasses, especially on the uphill side of the trail where the ticks wait on long grass. They don't jump or fly, but they have to touch you to attach to them. So largely, it's sort of slow-going, but we work with Lyme disease advocacy groups also and the Public Health Department to get the word out as much as we can. We have some large billboards on 101 each year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed it.
At this time, I'm going to have Vice Mayor Gallion go down to the podium with me so I can give a proclamation to observe the 180th anniversary of the founding of our peublo You used to be a mayor so much, you thought you were going to stand where I was going to stand, huh? You're just here for the city of Sonoma, just, yeah. This proclamation is to observe the 180th anniversary of the order to found the peublo of Sonoma and the establishment of June 24th as Sonoma Peublo Day. Whereas, on June 24th, 1835, Don Jose, governor of California, then a part of the Republic of Mexico, issued an executive order to Lieutenant Mariano Guadalupe Vallejo to establish a peublo in the Sonoma Valley and to lay out streets and squares around a central plaza. And whereas Lieutenant Vallejo decided to make the new peublo his home, and his presence led to Sonoma becoming a center of great political importance in Alta, California. And the small peublo grew into the present city of Sonoma, now recognized as one of the most desirable small cities in the country. And whereas, one of the missions of the city of Sonoma is to educate, promote, interest in, and advocate for the knowledge of its multicultural historical heritage. The city of Sonoma is observing the 180th anniversary of its founding as a peublo, and now is appropriate time to observe that anniversary and to recognize Sonoma's rich multicultural history by proclaiming each June 24th in perpetuity as Sonoma Peublo Day. Now therefore, I, David Cook, Mayor of Sonoma, do hereby officially recognize the city of Sonoma in celebrating its 180th anniversary of its founding as a peublo of Sonoma on June 24th, 2015, as establishment of June 24th as Sonoma Peublo Day. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that it's about time.
And this proclamation will be available tomorrow at the farmer's market, which is June 23rd, but that way it's, if anybody wants to see it. At this time, we're at the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine, and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion on any of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Is there any council questions? Seeing none, I will go to public.
No, I was, oh, sorry. No.
Seeing none, I will go to public. Seeing none, I will come back for a discussion and action. Councilmember Aggermonte.
I'd just like to move to approve.
Hang on one second.
Number four, which includes from the consent agenda 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G, and H.
So are you removing that? I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm.
You're approving all? Yeah.
Is there any other discussion? City Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. And for public, we just approved the consent counter, which was item 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G, and 4H on page three. Consent calendar order, city council as a successor agency. Item 5A, approval of the portions of the minutes of June 1st, 2015, city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency. Do I have any council questions? Seeing none, I will go to the public. Seeing none, I will come back for council discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion.
I move to approve the portions of the minutes of the June 1, 2015, city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency.
Second?
City Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. With that, we're going to start the public hearing. Item 6A, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the adoption of the 2015-16 operating and capital budget for the city of Sonoma and the Sonoma Successor Agency. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. On June 15th, the council held a four-and-a-half-hour workshop with department managers to review the draft budget in detail. At that workshop, each individual budget was presented and reviewed. In addition, our four Tier One nonprofit organizations made presentations on their request for funding for the 2016 fiscal year. Ultimately, the council gave direction to staff on the funding of the Tier One organizations, and the draft budget was modified into the final version, which is presented for your approval this evening. This is one of the most important actions that the council takes during the year. The annual budget is a policy document which sets the financial course for the city and defines the service priorities provided to this community. The prudent management of annual revenues protects the city from engaging in obligations beyond reasonable limitations or setting expectations for growth that cannot be sustained. Your 2015-16 goal for fiscal management states: "To maintain a high level of fiscal accountability that ensures short and long-term sustainability of the city's financial position; provide for effective and efficient management of local taxpayers' dollars; apply prudent internal policies and practices to assure the most cost-effective methods are utilized; be wise with our resources." To meet this goal, I am honored to present you with a balanced budget in the amount of $31.6 million for the city of Sonoma and the Sonoma Successor Agency per fiscal year This represents a total increase for all funds of approximately 7.5% from the 2014-15 budget. This increase is predominantly due to capital projects within the water and streets departments. The city maintains four major funds: the general fund, the gas tax fund, the cemetery fund, and the water fund. Each have separate revenue sources. The general fund is also the supporting fund for both the gas tax fund and the cemetery fund, each of which currently lacks sufficient revenues to balance their expenditures. Both funds remain in a deficit fund balance position, but have been sustained by the general fund since the council adopted the budget policy back in 2012 to contain the deficits until long-term financing plans can be established. The water fund is funded through user fees as required by governmental accounting standards. This was ratified through the adoption of your 2014 water rate study and plan update. Secondary minor funds and internal service funds are self-balancing through inter-fund transfers. As you are keenly aware, the city survives and thrives on a tourist-based economy, which has, in the most recent three-year period, seen a vibrant recovery from the recession and the economic downturn. During this three-year period, the city has seen upwards of 15% to 20% increases in tourist-related taxes. In the projections in this current fiscal year 2015-16 budget, staff is tempering the high thrust of the prior-year increases based on the end of 2015 revenue streams. As had been anticipated and as staff had discussed with you at mid-year, the continual incline is beginning to reflect a gradual leveling off. This is not without justification, as hotel occupancy rates are bumping the 85% to 90% ranges, and in some cases, many times on the weekends in the peak season, they're at 100% occupancy. We believe it is time to manage our economic gains in a more realistic approach. Therefore, staff took a longer range of view using an average economic growth factor of 5% to 7%. Expenditure levels for city departments overall mirror these increases, with exception to those that contain capital project expenditures or those who have external revenues sources such as grant revenues. Overall, I'm pleased to report that the city is in a sound financial position, and the current state of the city is, I would say, good to excellent. This is not only an internal rating, but is reflected in the city's excellent municipal bond rating. Taking this long-range view on revenue will continue to sustain the city's financial position. The public can be secure that taxpayers' assets per year council goals are managed with the utmost respect and oversight. So I want to delve a little deeper into your major funds, and the first major fund is the general fund, and is the primary fund for the city as it accounts for most of your public services. The general fund is the largest fund in the city's budget at $18.6 million and has an overall increase of 4.76% over fiscal year 14-15 budget. This amount represents a fully balanced budget. There are no excess revenues over expenditures. The general fund provides all direct public services, including administration, community development, public works, and public safety. The general fund continues to experience fiscal stability, based in major part on wise decisions by the current and past city councils and staff to maintain expenditure controls coupled with a solid tax base. I can't say enough about, again, the financial management of your current, the current council here and past councils. They've really kept an eye on the financial position of this city. As a part of this stable tax base, the city's budget includes a local revenue measure to assist with meeting long-term goals set by the council for a sustainable Sonoma. In October 2012, the voter-approved Measure J, a city half percent sales tax for a period of five years, will sunset in June of 2017. As a general tax, Measure J is dedicated to local services in the city of Sonoma. This was the promise to voters who passed the tax, and this is what your, this budget This was the promise to voters who passed the tax, and this is what your, this budget tonight validates. The fiscal stability has provided continued security in terms of keeping city services intact and expanding the needs of our residents where appropriate. As directed by council in your 2015-16 goals, staff will be initiating efforts targeting the election cycle for renewal of Measure J for the November 2016 ballot. Total tax dollars for Measure J contributing to the sustainability of public services and capital infrastructure upgrades is approximately $2.3 million annually. One area that we commonly focus on is the city's top 10 revenue sources, which are in the general fund. We have 62 separate revenue types within the general fund, but the top 10 revenue sources comprise 91% of all the total revenue which finances city services. As you've heard me say, this is both a positive and potentially a negative, as these sources are the most vulnerable to economic influences, including inflation, recession, or potential natural disasters. Our top 10 revenue sources include, first, the top is transient occupancy tax, or our hotel tax at 21% of revenue. Property taxes is 19% of the top 10 revenue. General sales tax is 18%. Measure J's sales tax is 13%. Ambulance fees, 8%. Vehicle license fees, 5%. Franchise fees, 3%. Building permit fees, 2%. Business license tax, 2%. And real estate property transfer tax, 1%. Three of the top 10 TOT are general sales tax and Measure J account for over half of the top 10 revenue. Analysis reveals that tourism dollars contributes to approximately 69% of these three revenue sources. So that's why I say we are a tourist-based economy. That is our industry here. It's also interesting to note that tourism is not solely related to overnight visitors or heads in beds. In fact, restaurants and food products are the top sales tax-producing category. So visitors are supporting our local restaurants and food resources. Sonoma is fortunate to have these sources to sustain the public services for our residents and keep our business community whole. So now, as we transition our discussion from revenues to expenditures, expenditures within the general fund are accounted for within 15 separate departments. Once again, as the city's primary operating fund, the general fund is balanced without uses of city reserves. The expenditures within the general fund align with council goals and priorities for 2016, including 1.8 million in street projects. There were several significant global changes to various city departments which reflect variations in the total budgets when compared to the prior year. These changes were, again, necessary to create efficiencies and future succession planning for the overall health of the organization, again reflecting back on your council goals. But overall, the general fund departments have averaged a 2.6% operational change from 2015 budget to your 2016 budget. So the average increase for operational changes is 2.56%. There are 10 other budgets outside the general fund. These budgets have revenue and expenditure sources and uses directed to specific programs. There are three other major funds: the gas tax fund, the cemetery fund, and the water fund. The seven remaining funds outside these three major funds are considered minor or internal services funds. Briefly to go over the other three major funds, our gas tax fund accounts for general and street, general street-related expenditures, including personnel, street sweeping, engineering, pavement and sidewalk maintenance, and capital infrastructure projects. This fund has slowly become non-self-sustaining, as the state has lowered the funding level of gas tax and shifted other street-related dollars. Since 2010, the general fund has continued to transfer funds to sustain the gas tax fund, and in 2015-16, the transfer from the general fund to support the gas tax fund is a little over $361,000. Moving to the next fund, our cemetery fund. The cemetery fund accounts for maintenance and operation of the mountain cemetery, the valley cemetery, and the veteran cemetery. Cemetery fund, as you are aware, is in a serious deficit position of approximately $1.6 million. This deficit has grown over many years to its current deficit position. During the past two fiscal years, the city's general fund has supported the cemetery fund by transferring an annual amount, generally in excess of $100,000, to sustain the fund so as to not increase this deficit until we come up with a funding plan to cure the deficit through the general fund and a long-term write-down plan for the council consideration, which we will be bringing to you this year. We have realigned personnel and expenditures in the 15-16 budget, so the, this general fund offset this year is just a little over $6,000. The last major fund is the water operations fund, and it provides for the maintenance and operation of the city's water distribution system. The water is supplied to Sonoma customers on a wholesale purchase through an agreement with the Sonoma County Water Agency. The revenue for water utility is derived from user fees and charges and is projected to increase approximately 5%. Greater focus in this year's water budget is in water conservation, education, monitoring, and maintenance efforts, shifting duties and responsibilities, and participation in countywide promotions to raise public awareness is constant. The city is engaged in, has engaged the major tourism establishment in assuring, in assuring that they are distributing the water conservation message to their guests. The last component of the budget presented for approval tonight is the city's capital improvement plan. City's capital improvement plan has become an integral part of the city's budget process. In the prior years, the CIP was adopted after the budget and was not viewed as, in context with the budget. But with the restructuring of the Public Works Director position to include the city engineering responsibility, this is a key focus of the budget, as it has a significant impact on staff workload. So the projects that are included in the CIP and are a part of the budget include the Carnegie Library building repair and repainting, including upgrades to the public restrooms, ADA and code improvements to the depot museum, corp yard and warehouse improvements for ADA and emergency shower improvements, Napa Road, street, and bikeway improvements. We have several street rehab projects and slurry seal program that will, that will be ongoing during 2015-16. We have the completion of the Chase Street Bridge, and we have eight water projects include, including West Napa Street water line replacement, which will be a very long stretch between Broadway all the way down to Staples. So before you take your action tonight to adopt the budget, I would like to add some final closing comments. The use of sound budgeting practices allow the city to maintain our streets and roads at a high level, to keep our parks beautiful, and to contribute to local nonprofit recreation services, provide public safety and emergency medical services. This budget further addresses the need to continue focus on sustainability of our water system and conservation, to evaluate housing policies, and potentially a new downtown design. It is reflective of the leadership that the council set through the adoption of your 2015-16 goals and provides a work plan for the coming year. I would be absolutely remiss, and I want to personally commend every department manager and every staff member for their hard work and dedication in putting this budget together. They really did, everybody, everybody really rolled up their sleeves and really had a part in putting this budget together, and really, most notably, our city finance director, Deanna Hillbrams, who headed our budget team. She, she did a yeoman's job in putting this together, and I really want to call out Deanna as, as doing a really great job. But it is because of the efforts of all staff, working together with the city council, that this city of Sonoma maintains the quality of life and standard of excellence that is experienced by residents, businesses, and visitors on a daily basis. So that concludes my presentation of the 2015-16 operating and capital budget. For anyone that's watching and listening, the full city budget can be viewed on the city website. There is a lot of information contained in this budget document, and I really encourage anybody, anybody and everybody to really take a look at it, because you're going to learn a lot about the city through this budget document. So at this time, I'm recommending that the council open the public hearing for public comment. At the conclusion, close the public hearing, and there is a resolution in your packet. I recommend that you adopt the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And before we go any further, I did want public to understand that we had the budget workshop last Wednesday, where all the department heads were there, and we went through this booklet with a fine-tooth comb. And that's just so they know that we're doing our background, and each council member's had this budget in their hands for some time. Is there any council questions to the city manager regarding the budget? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open up this public hearing for public comment. Mrs. Scarborough?
Hi, Mayor and council members. I want to thank you, first of all, for your support, your ongoing support of the city of Sonoma for the services that we at Vintage House provide to the community and that the other Tier One nonprofits do as well. And I want to recognize the fiduciary responsibility that you carry and that the prior city councils and that city staff, over these many years, have so effectively carried out in maintaining a very comfortable financial position for the city, when that's not true of our other cities in the county. Good work on the part of everyone. I also want to express our disappointment. The $900 increase that Vintage House will receive with the current budget brings us to within $3,000 of where we were eight years ago in 2007, 2008. And want to recognize that it would have taken an increase of only 6/10ths of 1% of the current budget in order to increase all Tier One nonprofits to the requested level during the coming year, in which you will be reviewing how you fund Tier One, how that whole process evolves, Tier One and other nonprofits. And with reserves, with city reserves of 28% of revenue, comfortably above the desired 25%, it wouldn't have been that much of a stretch to transfer from reserves to fund the four Tier One nonprofits, all four at 25% increase, again keeping in mind that it was only bringing us up to where we had been in many years past. So, and I, I am, I'm very mindful of the timeframe in which you have to work and the work that happened last week. So I would urge you to simply adopt, along with the budget, a retroactive increase to the Tier One nonprofits if revenues, in fact, turn out to perform better than projected, and if you have the flexibility to do that. It wouldn't require an adjustment to the current budget proposal, other than to recognize the possibility of spending excess funds as the year goes on in order to, to accomplish that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mrs. Kestron?
Hi, Toni Kestron with the Sonoma Community Center. And I just wanted to also thank you for the consideration that you all gave to all three, all four of the Tier Ones at the budget workshop, and also just put in a vote of support for the other Tier One nonprofits that were making the same request. So, thank you.
Thank you, Toni. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and officially close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember Hundley?
First, I wanted to thank Carol and all of the department heads for, one, putting together a beautiful budget, which if you have any interested numbers, you should look at it, because it's really easy to understand, and you can see where the money's going and where it was last year. And, and to have everybody else already work out all of the balancing of it and us be presented with a balanced budget makes it a lot easier for the council to not have to, you know, pick between the different departments to make it all fit, because they all work together and they, they make it fit. And then the one decision that, of course, we had was deciding how we were going to disburse money to the Tier One organizations this year. I feel really strong about this budget. I think it reflects the goals that we picked out perfectly. And when it comes to the, the Tier One organizations, the difference this year is that we established a set community service fund, and since this was a transition year, it still got divided between the Tier One organizations. But I think the idea in the future is if next year the council wants to continue this way, is that we'll move more towards a special project grant process and allow small organizations to have an opportunity to apply for smaller grants. But we don't know what it's going to look like, and one of the fun things we get to think about this year is how we can give back to the community. So I look forward to doing that. And then also, this next year, I know we're going to tackle the cemetery fund, and now that it's so close to being balanced, I'm really interested to see how we're going to take care of that so we can start getting ourselves away from these unfunded liabilities that we have. So, thank you for all of your hard work, everybody, and, yeah.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, this is, you know, in my, in my seventh year, this is my seventh budget, and I will tell you, there have been good times and there have been bad times. And I would say that I would much rather be in this particular frame of mind than in years in the past where we've actually had to defer how we're going to balance the budget and see how the year progressed. So, you know, for me, this is a very concentrated effort. It has taken a lot of restructuring. A lot of departments have reorganized themselves for efficiencies of scale, which is no short, shall I say, procedure or, you know, assessment. And, you know, what I like best is that this is actually coming from, you know, the bottom up to the top, where they're actually looking at their departments and seeing where they can find efficiencies. Now, that's pretty unusual, and I want to say that I would like to commend our city manager, because under her leadership, I really feel that they are developing with their, their own expertise, the abilities to be, you know, leaders in whatever capacities they choose in the future. And fiscal budget is going to be definitely very challenging, as far as dollars are concerned. I work in, you know, another industry, which also deals with the state budget, and there's a lot less flexibility in what can happen, you know, in, in receiving dollars from the, from the state. So this is nice to be able to actually pick and choose, you know, those things that, that through a lot of our goal-setting session process, we get to highlight and say that this is where we are this year. This is a much more thorough process of really tying staff together with endeavors, as well as going ahead and appropriating budgets for what we want to see done, based on our constituency input. I, I myself am looking forward to the, the new community fund that we have established with a tenet of having, at this point, a percentage of what we're talking about with our budget, because before, it could be shifted, you know, left or right, depending upon what the whim was at that particular point, not of the people applying, but of what the fiscal urgency of the community is about. This is very dedicated, and it is a structure, and it is a beginning. And I'm very pleased with that particular motion and that particular respect. So, given that, I felt that the budget workshop, which I believe was four-and-a-half hours long, saved you all in the audience, four-and-a-half hours, right, that, you know, I am, for one, very thoroughly vetted with this particular budget and can support it 100%. And when we get other comment here, be more than happy to make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gallion. Councilmember Aggermonte?
Thank you. Like, as other council members here, I'd like to say thank you so much, Carol. You know, the budget is so easily accessible, number one, and you can really understand it. Having Having come from other places, transportation, where the budgets are overwhelming, I think it's wonderful to be able to understand this. And like others who have made a comment with respect to the Community Service Fund, it falls in line with, I believe, corporations do, similar to what our city is striving to do, is get into research and development, to look at other things that are available to city government. And, of course, one of those was the issue of just discussion of recreation. The other, of course, is suggestion of Cindy Scarborough with respect to just, you know, possibly revisiting this issue maybe halfway through the year and taking a look at what might be available down the line, you know, just to understand ways that government can work actually for the people who live here. I'm very proud of the TOT and the TID. I think it's amazing. But one of the things I'm hoping for with our looking into this in a different way is how that translates into the quality of life for the people who live here, the residents. And that's something that really is important to me. So, I appreciate all the work. I don't know if this is the proper term, "all hands on the sword," and I just think it was a wonderful process. So, I really feel that I learn every day of my life, and this certainly was a good learning process for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also like to say, as the mayor of Sonoma, it's nice to hear the word "balanced budget." It makes my job and my colleagues appear an easy job. So, I do want to thank Carol and Deanne and all the staff. One thing I did want to comment on is I think the public sometimes doesn't realize that we are here with a balanced budget, but we've also have our vehicle replacement programs and different infrastructures that we're putting in there. And that's pretty impressive for a city because what it means is we're not cutting anything, but we're actually adding to the future. So, if we need vehicles in the future, we have already prorated some of that percentage. And I think that's something that I know before I got in the council, I had no idea the City of Sonoma had that. And when I talk to other cities, I always tell them that that's a secret to success, and I commend city staff for doing that. And I also just did want to say, as the department head of the city council, the city council went down 39% of our costs from $139,000 down to $84,000. So, I'm glad to see that we're all kind of doing our part. So, with that, is there any more discussion or action? Vice Mayor Gallion.
I'd like to go ahead and adopt a resolution of the City of Sonoma and the successor agency of the former Sonoma Community Development Agency to adopt the operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2015, '16.
And I would like to second that motion.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, city clerk, we have a motion and a second on the approval of a balanced budget. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
I was going to say absent. I...
Councilmember Gallion.
We had mics off, so.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley.
Aye.
Mayor Cook.
Aye. And thank you, Carol, again. With that, we will go to council member reports and comments.
I can start, if that's okay.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Well, I just wanted to let everyone know that recently, actually Vice Mayor Gallion was there as well. We attended a housing forum at El Verano School in Sonoma, and it was very revealing, obviously. You know what? It's just as the woman got up earlier who commented about living at the Haven House, it's very desperate times for many, many people who live here in the valley. I also attended a forum at the Hannah Boy Center, and it's interesting that Brian Farragor said this. He said, "Even though we're in Sonoma, we are not of Sonoma." And I really think that's a great phrase because what they're trying to do really is reach out more to the City of Sonoma and the valley as well. They want to actually be part of our community, more so than what they've done traditionally. I would also like to thank Chief Sackett. He attended a meeting of homeowners from Cobblestone and Blue Wing about some issues that are affecting their quality of life, so I wanted to publicly say thank you to him. As well as, I attended the Health Roundtable Meeting for the Department Health Services regarding project success, and this has to do with an issue that I'm dealing with here in the valley adolescent alcohol binge drinking, something that I am the committee chair for that with the Health Roundtable. So, there seem to be some gaps here of services here for our young people in Sonoma and the valley. So, I'm looking into that and working with other superintendents as well as our own. Also, I'd like to tell you, I'm working with the Firefighters Association on July 5th. They are going to be, they're asking for volunteers for the cleanup of the field, and that's from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And probably one of the big reasons I'm going is they are serving donuts, orange juice, and coffee. I haven't had a donut, I bet you, in 20 years, so I can't wait to do that. So, that's July 5th, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. in the field, the General Vallejo Field. And through City Hall, you can contact me. My numbers are there. But I look forward to seeing, we're just looking for 20 volunteers, able-bodied people. You don't even have to be able-bodied. I think you could just be willing. So, I'm just really appreciative for people who are calling me now to volunteer, and so I will see you on July 5th.
Thank you. Is there any other, Councilmember Hunley?
Last week, I met with the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Legislative Action Committee. In this committee, we have representatives from all the cities as well as representatives from our local state senators and assemblymen, and we talk about the new bills that are proposed in the state legislature to see if anything's coming out that's going to affect the cities. And there's a lot of interesting things out, but a few that I wanted to just mention was the biggest topic of conversation, it seems, is over the subject of medical marijuana. And Mike McGuire, who isn't our state senator, but he is a friend of ours because he covers the other part of Sonoma County, he is working on a bill that considers a lot of the environmental interests of the North Coast that I think is really important, and also it makes sure that cities still have the power to control what they want, what kind of businesses they want to have. And he also has another interesting bill that's all about things like short-term vacation rules and Airbnb, and whether the state can require websites like Airbnb to not only collect taxes but also not list rentals in cities where they are prohibited. So, there's some interesting things going on there. If people are interested in it, you can email me. I can tell you more about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunley. Vice Mayor Gallion.
So, it has been busy, all right? You know, in the month of June is June with budgets and whatever, but there have been other things that we've gone to. Mayors and council members meeting that we had in Cattati was a beautiful event, and I went there with Madeline and also Councilmember Edwards, city manager Carol Givinato. And we had a great time because we learned about the AGG and Open Space District with Bill Keen as our speaker. And I also just wanted to thank council, and I have been appointed for another two-year term on AGG and Open Space District Advisory Committee. So, you'll be seeing me more there. I attended, like Madeline had said, the housing group, okay, in the Springs, and the meeting that was there, this was done by the Sonoma Methodist Church, if I'm correct. And it's a very organized group there because they have been in study on this particular issue for many months, I would have to say, even probably the better part of a year. And it is all about the inequity of lives, and I think this is extraordinary that a faith-based group would go ahead and bring this issue forward, but it seems very logical because they are dealing with people in their particular organization and having to supplement sometimes places for them to stay, how they can find food, or, you know, relocating other services that are necessary. So, to me, understanding that awareness component, I think, was great. But what I was not prepared for was when we broke out into small groups. I chose a group or they chose me, who knows? But I sat down there, and not one person spoke English except the facilitator, you know, of the group itself. So, I actually had the opportunity of hearing, you know, on the ground running, a lot of the issues that our Latino communities, some of which are single parents with children and whatever, are dealing with in the housing community. And I expected, you know, I asked questions about, was this located in the Springs area? Was it located in the City of Sonoma? And the group was mixed. They're living in both areas. This is not just something that is identified only in the Springs as most people, you know, would want to think that it was going on. And extraordinary procedures with landlords. You know, it evoked in me just questions. And one of the questions was, number one, where do we have or what can we facilitate to go ahead? Because I always feel, given any situation, advocacy and education is probably the two things that you want to start with in order to be making sure that everyone is at a base level. I asked if they had heard about the County 211, and this is a referral for people who don't know about certain services, looking for transportation from place to place. You know, it's basically an information service specific to the county itself. And out of that group, no one had even known about that. And I feel that that's a lack. And so, I feel, as well as I think Madeline, I think we could speak together on this particular issue, that, you know, we are going to be looking for county to possibly send some of their specialists or have an opening for people in our particular area. And I'm sure there's other things that will come forward from this, but this is, I would have to say, a very moving experience. And I deal with this because I work with teachers. I look at people who are losing their homes because they can't afford to pay for them. And this is not just the City of Sonoma. This is also the Springs area. And I feel in this effort, it is not just even a county issue. This is a statewide issue. And so, as we come forward, this will probably be continuing on a theme. They asked for solutions at that particular meeting. I don't know that there were any solutions other than the fact that they wanted to get the awareness out. And as far as demonstrative action, of course, there were some ideas that were bandied about. But again, I believe we still have to go to advocacy, and we have to go to education because there are people that are having leases or whatever signed and not having proper procedures being respected. And in that respect, you know, it kind of left me very emotionally charged and definitely wanting to be making a difference in just not a position of elected but as a member of this community. So, I didn't really mean to go that long on that, but it definitely moved me. I also went to, switching gears, I went to the Local Energy Action Forum, and I had the honor of hearing both Bob Smith from our local area on there. We had our Socks and Vine, Jeanette, go ahead and be part of a panel discussion. We had Caitlin Cornwall. And then we had a representative from the county itself for Sonoma Clean Power. Is that correct, Carol? Yes, okay. And it was exciting to hear Carol talk about the projects that we've done here in the City of Sonoma. It's the one thing you really want to hear about is this is it, and it was rolling back history and time, the credits bond, you know, talk about the solar panels and what we've done as a community in saving greenhouse gas emissions. And when you figure that we're just two miles and the type of efforts that we put forth in order to bring about that change, this is really important, that not everybody knows where they can check in or they can make a difference in this area. But having that and the cutting of costs and the taxpayer dollars that we are not spending due to this innovation is just absolutely essential. And I think that's something that they will continue to work on a county-wide level to impress that these programs are available. But I think the direct message is also for businesses, that, you know, between our city programs that we have available here, between what the county has available here, you know, matching funds, the ability to make those loans, these are a possibility. And as a strategic plan in your business plan, it is about what you can do to save money on infrastructure. And I would hope that more companies, through the efforts of the Chamber Partnership and whatever, would actually be reviewing what that is for their business. And at least before they say no without information, say yes because they have been informed. Let's see, what else do I have here? Attended the Native Sons of the Golden West, the Chicken Barbecue. If anyone was looking for me, I was in the actual booth itself, serving hot dogs. Okay. This is, you know, one way that I love to give back in a community effort because I think it's important to volunteer. And I can certainly tell you that it was a wonderful day, a wonderful way to support a group that so absolutely supports heritage here in Sonoma. And you were in the reenactment as well, so, you know, there were, you know, other things going on, so we were there, and I just thought that was great. Let's see, the only thing I can say on transportation is be careful where you're driving. There are so many road projects going on here. There is a website on the county site, Four Roads, where you can actually check before you leave. Because I will tell you that there are, you know, over 19 projects that are happening within Sonoma County in different parts, and it's really important that you know what's going on. We have in Sonoma, and of course, my workspace is in the Springs. I'm right at the corner of Valetti and Highway 12, which is just one block away from the closure today at Agua Caliente. And I will tell you that life is very different. And moving along there, the improvement will be well worth it. That's my, you know, my mantra when I go through all of this. Okay, take time, but please slow down. I was almost broadsided once while I was trying to turn. I was almost rear-ended by someone who didn't realize that I was stopping and had my blinker on. And there's a lot of distraction on either sides of the road, so please drive slower when you see that a project is going on here. And I just want to make sure that you all survive so that you can celebrate Fourth of July. So, I just want to say, we won't have a council meeting between now and then, but our council has decided we're going to walk, but I will leave the rest of the message to the mayor. And just say that I wish you all a happy, healthy, and safe Fourth of July. And I have done that cleanup, Madeline, on July 5th. You would be surprised what you find in that field, all right?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gallion. And as I, I'm halfway through the term as mayor of Sonoma, and I will say that I do have to commend city staff. City staff does a great job. I'm always surprised. It is a daily, it is a daily commitment, being the mayor. City staff keeps you well advised on everything that's happening in the city. And for a small city of 10,600, seems like there's a lot of action going around. On Flag Day, the 14th, I actually was there and did the welcome, which was really nice. And I want to commend the Native Sons for doing such a great job. And then also George Weber, doing the reenactment of the Bear Flag. I think it's done in really great taste, and it was at the amphitheater, and I always look forward to that. I attended Hulamai, where I actually started the show with a conch shell blowing into it three times, two times good and one, I guess I don't have as much hot air as some people think because it didn't come out. NASCAR is this weekend, so I want everyone to know to be very careful if they're driving down 37. down 37. It should be a, a great event for Sonoma, and I did want to remind everybody about the shuttle that is available on Saturday. I think that that's great, the Visitors Bureau, Friday and Saturday, doing that. And just for those who might have not been listening in the beginning, it actually starts from the Historical Plaza at 10:00 a.m., and the last is to 10:00 p.m. So I like to curb drunk driving, I'm against drinking and driving, and I think it's great that the city, with the Visitors Bureau, is stepping up on that. And then, yes, Fourth of July is coming, and the council has decided to walk, and I'm very pleased in that. I feel that it'll be, it'll be fun, because one aspect to being the mayor of Sonoma, I really would like to see everybody become healthy. You know, losing 55 pounds has definitely changed my life, and I would, you know, if anybody wants to call me up and ask me how to do it, I can give you the right people to talk to, because everybody has to do things different. So do celebrate the Fourth of July. We have a great fireworks show, and if one thing I could say, is just be safe. And I also do want to apologize to the citizens of Sonoma for what's going on with the PG&E projects around the plaza, but it's done for a good reason, and I know it's a little hectic, but the good news is, I've heard that they're going to be done in the middle of July, and they won't be doing, they won't be doing any work during the Fourth of July. So with that, I will turn it to the city manager for her final comments.
I just, very, very briefly, just want to announce, we have three, we have openings on three commissions, and applications will be accepted for these commissions until 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, July 1st. The first is the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. We have one alternate member open, must be a city resident. And we have openings on the Community Services and Environment Commission. We have two regular members and one alternate position open. One of the regular members and one alternate must be city residents. And then lastly, we have to replace Mr. Bowie on the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District. For that position, the board meetings are held at 7:00 p.m. on the second Wednesday of the month, at district headquarters in Katati, so you will need to be able to travel to Katati. Board members do receive compensation in the amount of $100 per board meeting, and applicants must reside in Sonoma Valley. So city of Sonoma or Sonoma Valley. So that concludes the report.
Thank you, Carol. And with that, we're to the big moment of comments from the public. Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I will bring it back for adjournment.